Probably the first thing to do would be to go around and do some introductions. And if we have some new board members possibly, and I don't know if you have new committee members, but it's always good to do some new introductions. So we'll start on this side. If you're all right with that, work our way around the table.
This will be my second year as a member of the. Welcome.
Matt St. John, I have the newest member of the school board.
I'm Greg Cook, Chair of Board. This is finishing up my ATR report.
Patty Brown, the Business Administrator.
I'm John Gigerich on the Budget Committee for what was brought in for punishment, second year in a row. He has served Budget Committee as a B of the last four years.
Phil Blue, Budget Committee. This is my first year.
I'm Diane Kinnon. I'm the Chair of the Budget Committee.
Tom Tietz, first year on the Budget Committee.
Mike Stevens, Budget Committee.
And Steve Kelly.
And then you've got Dr. Hart, our Superintendent, I believe, on the call at home and sees picture anymore.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for coming.
And I think we've got a couple of members of our community in the room as well. So moving on, Dr. Hart, do you want to present the goal alignment of the school board and school administrator as a number three on the agenda?
Okay, so, yeah. So basically, what I want to try to do this evening is for any new board members or both on the school board or the Budget Committee. Last year, we tried to get together and try to be a little bit more collaborative than maybe we had in the past. And this first meeting is designed to try to do that. I'm going to go through kind of the context of where we are as an administrative team in developing the budget. The objective of tonight is to have you go through where we are at this point and then get some feedback on either questions that you have or concerns about what you're hearing from us or some suggestions on how we can move forward. So my suggestion here is I'll go through this presentation and then we could open up some clarifying questions. And then just say, okay, you know, as board members, what do you see? What does it make you think? And what are you wondering about or what type of feedback do you have? And then I'll bring that back to the administrative team, the feedback that you do give us and, you know, make any type of modifications in the budget to try to reflect that feedback. Does that make sense for everybody? Okay, I can't hear anybody, but I'm going to assume that it does. All right. I think it's how we doing on this presentation? If we could move it to the next slide. You know, I think when we're talking about anything around the schools, it's critically important to come back to what the school system sees as its mission, vision, and guiding principles. And so I'd like everybody to take a moment to reread some of what we say is central to what we're doing. Because, you know, budget and financially, it's, you know, we want to be aligning how we spend our money on what we say is most important to us. So I'm just going to give people about 30 seconds to review what a mission, vision, and guiding principles are. Okay, great. Thank you. If we can move to the next slide. So the school board, you know, has goals every year, the three goals that we're going to be focusing on for this year and most likely moving into next is what you said, build a positive collaborative professional culture across the district. Provide an elementary school building that addresses the current and future needs of elementary students and staff. And build a K through 12 curriculum-based system to develop students as 21st century learners. So hopefully, you'll see this more as we get more deeply into the budget process and how hopefully those three goals are embedded in how we're leveraging funding to support those goals. So if we move on to the next slide, one of the things that the school district has been doing for a number of years now is focusing on three, what we call the big three. And that's, if we look at it, I'm going to start with the middle piece, the competency-based education. It's really being clear about what you want students to know and be able to do. That's a little bit different from how many of us went to school where there was always a bell curve where you just kind of expected some students were going to do exceptionally well, some students were going to do moderately well, and some students just weren't going to cut the grid. Competency-based education shifts that whole paradigm and philosophy. It's all about being clear about what you want students to know and be able to do. And the expectation is that all students will reach those high standards. Doesn't mean that other students may not go beyond that, but the basic competencies we want all students to do. So I'm going to then move over to the right, social emotional learning. I think we all know that students, if they're not socially and emotionally stable and secure and empowered, then they can't engage, no matter how bright they are, how gifted they might be intellectually. You know, they're not going to engage in the learning experience. So we want to make sure that social emotional learning is central to all of our curriculum. So we're creating a culture where students feel supported, feel that they're involved with, etc. So and then the final piece, I'm going to move all the way to the left now, is universal design for learning. And that's basically saying that instead of, in the past, teachers would come into a classroom and they'd say, okay, this is how I run my classroom. And, you know, if that worked for you, that was great. If it didn't, that was a challenge for individual students. Universal design for learning is saying just the opposite. It's saying that we need to know what each student in our class needs to access a rigorous curriculum. And so then we have to adjust our teaching and learning, our assessment practices, etc., to make sure that they can engage in that. So when you put these big three together, it's a pretty powerful combination. You see that manifested in the type of curriculum that we purchase or develop, the type of professional development that we do, the type of classroom and evaluation system that we have for teachers. So going on to the next slide, so what are we doing about that now, this year into next and probably the next several months? Well, one of the things we're doing is, if you look at the bottom right part of this slide, we have a book called Making Thinking Visible. It's just one moment, please. So what we've done is we're taking two different books that the whole school system is reading. The school board members have copies of them, all administrative team has, all of our teachers and our paraprofessionals. And so the first book, which isn't identified here, is Creating a Culture of Thinking. And that's about what has to happen systemically within our culture to support thinking. And so that's one piece that we're doing. The second piece is the book that you can see there, Making Thinking Visible. It's a very tangible way for teachers to change their teaching and learning in their classrooms to support and make thinking visible in their classrooms. Some of the things that we did to try to support that this year is we had, I think, about 45 staff members. That included administrators and teachers attended an online conference hosted by Harvard University called the Sparks Conference. And the Sparks Conference kind of helped watch this idea of how do we change or modify our learning culture to have it focused on developing students' thinking skills. Now, to do that, that's kind of a challenging shift in our teaching and learning. So we've tried to go and build some systemic collaboration meetings. If you looked at all of our meetings as administrative team, they're all focused on this goal of building a culture of thinking. We have, we spent, every year, we have four days before school starts to get prepared for the year. And three out of those four days, we had an agenda that helped build people's understanding and capacity around this focus on thinking and thinking development of students. We also have had, in the first six weeks of school, we've had 24 teachers participate in professional collaboration training. So that helps build the capacity to collaborate with each other as teachers especially around your work, because this is, it's a difficult shift. If you try to shift your classroom environment to a greater focus on thinking, that means you have to change some of your practices. And that's always can be a little bit challenging. So if we can build a professionally collaborative culture where people are sharing both their successes and their challenges, that builds a system that supports innovative change, not only for this particular innovative change, but innovative change over time. And the final piece there is deepening our professional culture by expanding teacher leadership. So we want to have, we want to build and expand our teacher leaders. And those people will have specific training on how to facilitate collaborative conversations with their peers, how to go through what they call an inquiry cycle, where you take a look at what you want to achieve, gather data around that, do what they call a gap analysis, and then research best practices to help close that gap. And so we want to build that so it's embedded in our regular culture. So that's kind of, you know, in a broad sense, where our focus is this year and will continue to be next year. So when we look at our budget, what's the current budget context, in my opinion? Well, as we all know, we've lost state aid just recently. We brought that to the voters and the voters decided to keep that funding. Just for the Budget Committee, I think it's important that the Budget Committee understands that adequacy aid comes from the state. And why Littleton has a fair amount of adequacy aid is because when they look at their formula that includes demographics, student demographics, they believe that it's challenging for us to support the students with some of the socioeconomic challenges that they have. One of the biggest key issues is free and reduced lunch. Well, free and reduced lunch in Littleton, some fluctuates between 40 and 50%. That's a huge amount of students that, according to the federal government and state government, are living in poverty. So in my opinion, this current context is that lots of state aid is concerning to me because I don't feel like people understand why that state aid comes to Littleton. The other piece that I think is a challenge is in New Hampshire and nationally, at least currently, we have in excess of 5% inflation rate. So we need to try to do business next year in a positive way with that type of challenge around, you know, the inflation and how much things cost. The final piece is negotiations. So I think obviously, school board knows and the Budget Committee, if you don't know, we have to negotiate with both of our unions, support staff union, I teach it union. So that's going to have an impact on our budget. Now, I just want to build that context, but let's go on to where we are right now. So as you know, the federal, what they call ESF funds, is that stimulus money that has been sent out to school systems and towns across the nation. What we're doing as we've built this budget is we're saying, whenever we can, we want to take especially long-term projects around facilities and get them funded to ESF. So, you know, we have some roofing that we can do. There's, you know, there's just a number of different facilities issues that have been on our facility strategic plan for a number of years that we're hoping ESF funds will help us do. That's important for us because that allows us to take a look at our operations budget. The second piece is technology. ESF funds are very supportive of technology. And we've made a huge commitment to technology in Littleton in a very positive way. But it's an expensive piece. And so, but if we can leverage the ESF funds to help with technology, that will help not only for the next couple of years, but we're hoping it will go three or four years out. And then finally, teaching and learning, that we can make some modifications and change some support systems for especially our most needy students and use ESF funds to do that. So these are funds that we're hoping will take in these three key areas and be able to have a positive budget impact for a number of years. ESF funds, we're supposed to have them identified and spent by 2024, but we're hoping we can extend that out beyond that. And we can talk about that a little bit more later in the presentation. So if we can go to the next slide. So what have been my budget objectives in collaboration with my leadership team? Well, one is that we have a level-funded budget. And so, and I think at this point anyway, we're in pretty good shape for that. But I need the budget, especially the Budget Committee. I need your help as we move forward. Not only are we looking at level funding, but with a 5% inflation rate, that's essentially somewhere between an $800 and a million dollar cut. So I think the town people need to understand that level funding, it's like, well, we gave you the same amount as we gave you last year. So what's the problem? Well, the problem is is that everything's more expensive. In the current economic conditions, it's fairly substantially more expensive. So that was one budget objective, is to be able to present to the school board and eventually to the community, a level-funded budget. The second piece is, as I mentioned before, to leverage ESF funds. So that helps us right-size our operations budget. It helps us right-size our technology budget and allows us to support teaching and learning in ways that we may not have been able to do without it. And a final piece is, we are woefully behind in trying to recruit and retain support staff, like our paraprofessionals. I think at the bottom of, if we hired somebody right off the street now, I think it was just over $11 an hour. People, you know, people make a lot more than that working at McDonald's. And it's very similar for our custodians. So we have to do something to stay competitive so we can recruit and retain people. So that's been part of, you know, part of this budget. Now, having said all of that, we still expect that what we'll present to the community with the support of the school board is a level-funded budget. Okay, let's move on. So the warrants, I just figured I'd throw some stuff out there so we could start thinking about it. The safety items that weren't accepted in our adequacy aid proposal, I think we need to take a look at those safety items and maybe a couple of other pieces. I think that, you know, what we're doing here, and I hope especially the Budget Committee sees it, is we're trying to right-size elements of our budget. But what that means is, if you do that, you have far less wiggle room. You know, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but the far less wiggle room. To be able to retain instead of the 2.5%, 5% to ensure that if we're really, you know, tightening the belt in other areas, that if we get into trouble, you know, we won't be in a situation where, you know, you'd have to go back to the taxpayer or et cetera. And there's been talk for the time that I've been here, and you can see as you walk around the classes, some of our classroom furniture. None of that's embedded in our budget. But, you know, I'm thinking that maybe we should bring that to the product community and see if they'll support the one-time spending around some of our classroom furniture. So this is just, you know, at the point of, you know, just I have three different questions, you know? What do you see? What does it make you think? And what are you wondering about? What type of feedback do you have? This is going to be a little bit difficult because I'm not going to be able to hear. It's a little garbled. So I don't know if there's, maybe through Craig, if the question could be repeated, if there's specific questions for me. And then I have up at the front of the room, Sheena is going to be, you know, if there's questions, if there's any concerns, if there's feedback, you know, if we could record that so then we could bring that back and see what type of modifications we need to make in our budget before we send it out to first the school board and then later the Budget Committee. I don't know if anybody has any clarifying questions before we go into any of the other pieces.
Bill, Steve Kelly, can you hear me? Bill?
Yeah, go ahead.
The one thing that kind of caught my attention and obviously a very valid point having to do with the hiring support staff, the summer program that we had three summers ago, evaluating our school system performance in all aspects. Probably the number one finding in that summer, and this was comparing our school system with seven other comparable school systems in the state of Hampshire, was that our pay structure and benefit structure for support staff was out of skew, if you would, with the seven other schools that we were aligned with in the state. And the main finding that we came up with, that the summer session with, was that we needed to increase our pay scale for our support staff and we needed to adjust our benefit package downwards. Our benefit package, the sense was that a lot of the people that we had working for us and that were interested in the jobs were looking for the benefit package and not for the wage offering. That same year, the school was engaged in a contract negotiation with that support staff. And basically, that main recommendation, I think, was not addressed at all or wasn't addressed successfully. And to throw this on to Tom Mangles, who was involved in it, we came back with the answer. We asked him, well, Tom, what happened to the recommendation? And basically, he said, the people, I'm paraphrasing here, but people weren't interested in it. But that's probably weren't interested in it because the people that you already had worked before you had come to work for you because they were more interested in the benefit package than they were in the wage package. So that is something I think we all recognize. But if you compare what we're offering as a benefit package with the seven comparable schools, we were significantly higher in that. And obviously, we weren't just, not truly, not just for the benefit package for the support staff, but we're also significantly higher than the rest of schools in terms of our regular teacher contract. So that's something that certainly has been visited. And I think it has the support of the committee and drive of the community in terms of making a change, but somebody needs to initiate the change.
Right, Sheena, let's try to capture that on a flip chart.
I think one of the chapters, since we're actively teaching with those two unions, there's only so much we can talk about. Right, the substance of the negotiations has to remain confidential while they're ongoing. And we've officially opened up negotiations with both the LSSA and the LTA. So it makes it a little bit complicated for Ann not to speak, that should be good.
Right.
Sure.
In response to Matt, I think at this time, we just want to bring up that report. So anybody that's in negotiations can see that that committee, the summer report, so to speak, I can't remember the official name, the Cost of Education study actually addressed that. And we basically addressed it too as a committee. We brought forward that information saying that we would highly recommend some adjustments in both areas on that to take into consideration. I know because you're in negotiations, you cannot speak, but I think at this point, sharing the point of gathering here is to sort of hear from us because I think we're a good sounding board. And we just wanted to share that information with you.
Thank you.
I think the Cost of Education Study, if I'm correct, was the summer of 2019. It was before COVID hit. It was, it might even been the summer of 18, but it was either 18 or 19 was that summer, 18. So if you have to go back, I'm sure we have a copy in the.
I think it's on your website.
It is.
Yeah. It is, okay. Yeah.
To follow up on that, I. Sorry, go ahead, Bill.
First, have we captured that as an issue?
Yeah.
Yeah. So let me see if I can summarize because, again, the audio here isn't great, but I think I caught most of the conversation. And essentially, I think it's basically, why are we looking at salaries? Because we have this flush benefits package. Is that essentially what the conversation is?
No. The conversation is, we would like you to look at salaries and perhaps adjust the benefits accordingly. And also, if some of those things have to be grandfathered, we could support that. But to start down a road that would be beneficial to the school system in attracting qualified people to work for you.
So, but can I just, so here's, you know, the school board makes these final decisions. But once you get a look at the budget, what we spend on support staff and I don't, won't be any more than what we've spent on the support staff in the past. So there'll be no additional cost there. I do philosophically have a problem with the, with probably our most needy population somehow not getting the same benefits that other people in the school district get. I get the financial piece, and I think once you see the budget, you'll see that there's no additional spending there. I get the financial piece, and I think once you see the budget, you'll see that with, there's no additional spending there. But if I, I would not be advocating for, um, a, a, a reduction of people's benefits. I, I, you know, I think some of these people are, you know, they, they work awfully hard for us. Some of them have really difficult jobs. I just talked to a woman the other day who's a one-on-one aide with our, um, with, uh, with one of our most challenging students and, you know, had, had to go to the nurse and, and wrap up her hand because the, the student had thrown something at her. Um, so, so I just want to be clear where I stand on that. Um, I, I'm, the, the, the financial piece, I, I hear what you're saying, and I, and I think that as we look at the cost of our support staff, um, we have to rein that in a bit, um, but it wouldn't be through benefits.
Do you want to go ahead? Okay, um, Steve, do you want to go ahead? Um, I, I think that we agree that we don't want to jeopardize their benefit packages in a way that they do not have benefits. But we also found that other school districts have implemented, um, I guess buyouts that would initially help them if they had a spouse to go to the spouse's insurance and, and help them there. And, and they came out ahead, basically. And, um, but we don't want to, um, we're not saying not to give them access to benefits, but there are other things that might be implemented that would help reduce that. Steve?
Yeah, Bill, I was, you weren't there for that discussion. It was a rather lengthy, uh, summer. But there were several elements to it. One was to, to get better qualified, motivated, wherever the case may be, uh, support staff. Bring the benefit package more in line with what exists statewide. But the other piece of it, uh, which, uh, there was, there was a fair amount of foot dragging, uh, not from the superintendent, but from some of, uh, the staff in terms of getting information, uh, you know, it, you know, how many times are we hearing these things about, well, you know, that's HIPAA protected as well? It's hard to have an open and productive discussion if you're trying to dodge the HIPAA bullets all the time. And I'm not sure if those bullets exist to that degree, but some of the, we talked about some of the other stuff that has happened in, in private industry of necessity, uh, that your businesses are a little bit at home around the country that wouldn't exist today if they hadn't been open to new and different ideas. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the, uh, fairly common, uh, uh, approaches that are used today on larger deductibles is, is to have the employer assume some liability. Uh, so on, and on the qualified plans today, which have just been revised, you know, for next year, it came out within the last month. I think on an individual, you would have a deductible of, I believe it's sixty-five hundred dollars or sixty-nine hundred dollars. And a family plan would have double that deductible. Well, to mitigate that sixty-five or sixty-nine hundred dollar figure, which might seem onerous or, or whatever, you, you can, as an employer, implement a, uh, a structure to that, and you can modify it to a several different ways with a donor without a donor, but kind of a typical thing would be was that the employer would pick up the first three thousand dollars of the deductible. The employee would pick up the second two thousand dollars of the deductible, and then the employer would pick up the balance of the deductible so that the, uh, employee, and, and the worst-case scenario would be responsible for two thousand dollars. And most employees, truthfully, never get out of the first three thousand dollars deductible, so it never kicks in on them at all. Uh, but, you know, that requires some openness, uh, which in, in, in the school industry, but truthfully in the town, if we, you know, we've also talked to them about that, you know, they're not particularly open to that. They, they like to have that absolute certainty. Well, I can tell you that there's many an employer in downtown Littleton who's done it this other way, and they save money and has not had any negative impact on the employee. So we're not talking about eliminating benefits of people who, who need them, but we're trying to look at it in a way that we can be more productive, uh, proactive, if you would, and be able to, you know, raise that entry-level hiring, you know, from eleven dollars to fifteen dollars or twenty dollars, whatever the case may be, and reshift the balance, which would make you, you know, you're a better, in a better position to recruit employees. So that, that was the, the sense of it. And like I say, it was the number one recommendation that came out of that. It was timely, because that fall, we're going into negotiations, and on negotiations, I don't know how hard it was pushed, but I just know that the final answer was, there was nothing.
I wasn't around for that, but I can say that I do believe that there, there's some sentiment out in the town that the school employees have some of the best healthcare coverage for. Healthcare is probably the highest cost of the benefits, right? I mean, as far as the benefits go, it's either going to be the pension fund or the health insurance, correct?
Is that a question?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a question. It's an assumption posed as a question. I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know if you were making that statement.
The, the correct at the end was my, uh, question turning into a question. Anyway, the reduction or increasing the cost borne by the employee is somewhat of a reality for almost every other employee, especially in the private sector, and I think that's kind of what Steve was alluding to. So I'm not suggesting that we cut people's benefits, but just like everyone else out there, there's nothing wrong with having them bear more of the cost. Like my co-pays have gone up a hundred percent over the last three years, from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars. So I, I'm not sure if, if all of this is anecdotal to me because I don't know any of the information, but I do believe that, I have heard some people saying in the town that, you know, oh, the school has the best benefits out there, so they shouldn't complain. So if that's the town sentiment, then a way to help mitigate some of that concern and help push through some of your other, um, ideas is to do the rebalancing that's been, um, suggested and also brought up again here tonight. That's all.
Yeah, what is the, what is the percentage of premiums paid by teachers right now?
Fifteen percent.
That is.
Fifteen?
She said fifteen percent.
Yeah.
That is a totally, that, that is, go ahead, Steve, you know, do you remember?
It's fifteen percent, Greg, unless you accept the driver plan, that there's no participation by people directly.
They, they can take the, um, eight thousand, there's three plans. The top plan is a four thousand dollar deductible with a two thousand dollar HRA, which they pay fifteen percent on. The second plan is a four thousand dollar deductible, which they don't get any HRA for, and that one, I think, is, comes about five percent. They pay about five percent. And then there's the orange plan that is an eight thousand dollar deductible, which they don't have to pay anything for. So I think when we did the calculations, like how many are in each plan, I think there were very few at the top level. Most of them were probably in the second plan. Um, I don't know, I do know, but I don't know off the top of my head. Um, I do have people in the orange. Those would be people that tend not to use medical insurance. Some of this report is kind of coming back to me, sorry. I mean, the orange, we have to have, you know, we have to have something that meets, um, our federal requirements on health insurance that's affordable. Because if you have low-paying employees, we have to offer some type of insurance that's affordable or we get fined. So, so some of this stuff is coming back to me. It has been a few years since I've even read the report. Uh, we, we, when we looked at it, and we looked at the information and what our deductibles were, and what the employees pay, what our plan was, who we went with, it came in so much seriously stellar than some of the other, uh, school districts that we were comparing. The other seven that were similar in size and structure. It was better. However, someone asked, then why, when we compared the budgets from one school district to another school district, why are we paying more? Why in our, the operating budget, why is it more if we have better plans? And the point came out was, it was the support staff that we offer the same as the professional staff. And I'm not saying yes, no, or indifferent. I'm just sharing what we found out. And it, it came to almost six hundred thousand dollars difference compared to other school districts. And then we started like, okay, so what are they doing with the support staff in other districts? And a lot of them had offered tremendous buyouts, which helped them purchase insurance either through a spouse's or through somewhere else. And I think in one place, the support staff didn't receive health insurance at all. We're not suggesting that, but we're saying that somewhere, that is where the big gap or the big thing was, with, with the support staff, the big change, the big cost, uh, for this school district over other school districts.
I think we, I think we've captured that as a, as a priority of, of the budget committees for us to look at. You have something, you have something else? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, well, well, it's, it's just, it's a nuance to this whole discussion, but, uh, the other, the other thing I'd mention is, I think participation somehow by, by the teachers and the support staff in their to a level that's, uh, that they feel, not to punish, but to feel, helps them also control costs for everybody. So it's important not to have the premium solo for that, that they, uh, don't feel a responsibility to control, uh, medical services when they really don't need them. So I, I know when, when I was in business, we really focused on that. Uh, we had a goal of, our employees paying thirty percent. We never made it. We were at twenty. But it's still significantly more than what, uh, most teacher groups pay. So I'll just point that out.
Um, and you had said, I have another question. You had said in the presentation that there, that there's, the budget does not reflect any cost for furniture and ongoing, you know, durable equipment kind of stuff. Um, is there a reason that it's not part of the budget? It seems like some, having some kind of rotation of furniture would be somewhat just part of operating a school.
Yeah, well, it, it certainly could be part of the budget, and if that's the feedback, we, we could take a look at it. Right now, the budget that, that we're looking at is a, a, about a couple hundred thousand dollars less than it is, um, this year. And that's because of some of those pieces that we've pulled out of the budget. Um, it's, so, but again, I mean, we, we, we could, we could add that back in.
I wish, my feedback is put it back in because it's part of running a school. It's like, well, it's all good except if we have to feed the students, it'll be your, they need a place to sit down if they're going to come to school. So they need the furniture.
Bill, Bill, this is Greg. Can I just clarify on, on that? When you mentioned that that was a potential warrant article for, for, for furniture, is that because it's a, if you're looking to do a larger purchase of furniture district, district-wide than you normally would in your normal routine budget annually? I would imagine if we have a broken desk and we have to replace it, that's part of our operating budget, which I think is what you're speaking to.
Somewhat, yeah.
But if we're looking at doing a, like a complete refurbishment or replacement of several classrooms or, or one whole wing, that that would be a, a warrant article because that's going to be an excessive purchase outside of our normal routine operating budget? Is that essentially what you're, what you're looking to do?
That's correct.
Okay, follow-up question. Why would we have to refurbish classrooms if we're constantly, you know, like keeping the furniture up to date? And I'm speaking loudly so we can hear.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, i- i- it's, I mean, if you look at, if you look at, uh, the replacement of, um, you know, it's almost like, you know, I guess the town saying, well, you know, putting on a warrant article, a, 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 a police cruiser. Do you maintain the police cruiser? Um, you know, every day, do you change the tires? Do you make sure, you know, but, um, but that's a, that's just a philosophical piece. I, we could adjust, um, the budget to have, you know, what, whatever it would be, fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars a year, looking at, you know, a regular cycle of replacement. So, uh, you know, I, 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 I'm not going to throw myself on a sword over, over this decision, but, um, so we can re-embed that into, into our budget. But, um, it, you know, it's, it's, it's just,
Just needs to happen sometimes. Okay.
Right, like even if you looked at like a fifteen-year rotation, you know, you'd still have to have a couple classrooms in your budget every year. And that's what, you know what I mean?
And that's what I'm saying. How was that not already done?
Right. And that's.
Account to take care of that.
There's a warrant article. I mean, there is, you know what I mean?
I would recommend the, the, that more than, okay, we need to refurbish five classrooms, so we want to spend five, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on furniture. Say, create a fund for it and draw from that and hopefully it gets funded every year or whatnot.
And it, it's extremely hard right now. It's like so hard to buy things right now. Everything is so insulated. You know, it's like you don't want to do anything at, at large volumes right now because everything is so expensive, you know, so, you know, it's tough. It, it, it's a tough decision to make. Like, how much do you do? How much do you actually budget for? Or do you set it aside for a future purchase when you have the money available, you know?
It's one thing different than a police cruiser. Twenty-five thousand dollars a year goes into it in a gallon.
That's fifty thousand each year for the cruisers.
Correct.
Um, so, but can you find out how much is in the budget currently for such items? I mean, do you have anything in the budget? I think we're still kind of flip-flopping whether or not we have something in the budget or don't have anything in the budget.
That was the question I had.
Here's, here's my suggestion, is, is, you know, tonight is to kind of capture the questions. And, and so the question around furniture is, you know, it's a good one. Let's come back. We'll take a look at it. And, um, I think what I hear from at least a couple of the budget committee members is, is, you know, embedded in, in your budget. So every, every year you have a, you know, substantial amount of money to, to do replacements. That makes sense. I get it.
So, so clarified in my mind is, is, is it semantics and the word refurbishing is used when it really isn't refurbishing as much as it is an ongoing replacement?
Right, I mean, there's some stuff that gets repaired, you know, some things that can be repaired, but you truly need to be on a rotation. You need to be on a rotation, or you will be in a position where you do need to spend a large amount of money at one time. Just like your computers, you know, you have to be on, um, like our facility, um, list where we do so many classrooms a year.
Question here, I'd answer is, uh, how old is this, your current furniture? And, and, and what furnishings do you, or what classrooms would you propose to replace the oldest of, assuming one that's mostly beef? But how old is that furniture? And you can go back to that, but I mean, that's something that. I want to know, yeah.
Can I ask a question on a different topic now? So for the state adequacy aid, I believe it's a biennial number. And this year it came in $477,000 more than what you were told. I think the, the sequence is that sometime in October and November, the state tells, alerts the school districts approximately how much they're going to get. And then we vote in March and then the governor makes his budget. And then we can find out the real truth and what you're really.
I'll get, we'll have our estimate with it the next two weeks.
So, but this is not a biennial yet. This 477 was in addition to, it was, was it a formula that they based that on? So if, if it's a formula, is this the first year of the formula? Because it's usually goes for two years. So will we be receiving the same amount?
We'll find out in two weeks what our amount will be. It'll be based on our free and reduced numbers as of October 1st and our ADM. This past, this last year, they changed the ruling so that we could use our 2019 numbers instead of 2020 because of COVID.
But the formula will still be the same. So that's what I'm trying to establish is the formula. Was this the first year of a new formula or are they now creating a different formula?
The formula is salvage. They allowed us to use our 2019 numbers. But now our numbers that are coming out in the next two weeks will be based on our 2021 numbers as of October 1st.
But the base formula will be the same.
Right. It has that. We just got to go back and use our 2019 enrollment in free and reduced numbers.
I was just, but did that, our S R, did that influence the 477,000 just on the free and reduced lunch numbers?
In A D M?
Yeah.
Diane is, it's, I, I want to make sure I understand Diane's question. It's about.
Yeah, she, oh, sorry, go ahead. She was just asking about the adequacy aid and what, what the amount would be based on for this upcoming fiscal year. And if it was going to be the same as what we just got. And I told her the numbers would be based on October 1 of this fiscal year.
Which I believe, I believe, so, so the problem, you know, I'm sure you, you probably remember, but let me just go over it again. The problem last year was the government gave everybody free lunches. So the parents that would normally sign up for free and reduced lunch didn't. And across the country and across our state, there's a significant drop in, in free and reduced lunch applications. That's what we were talking about when we're trying to build the budget because, of, for last year. Because we were having false numbers. We had $477,000 less than what we, we could have anticipated getting because of that. The state by law had to follow their own formula. So it wasn't until after the fact that they actually went back to the previous year's numbers. And that's why we received the $477,000 that the state believed that the schools, Littleton School System needs to operate was sent back to us. And so this coming year, I think our numbers are back up near the 2019 numbers. So I don't see a significant change in what we can anticipate. Would you agree with that, Patty?
Yes. Phil, I was just basically getting, there are three things that influence the adequacy aid. One is the ADM, another one is the free and reduced lunch, and the third part, new formula. So I was just trying to establish which year of the biennial are we in on the formula? Because they, every two years they switch, they change the state adequacy aid formula. Do you know which year are they, is it going to be a new formula for next year? I mean.
I haven't heard anything about a new formula.
No, I, I have the state document in front of us, the, the calculation for F Y 21 and 22 is the same. So I believe that would make next year the second.
At 20, so it'd be the same for 22, 23.
Right.
Quick question. On the slides, you said that level funding because of a 5% inflation rate, level funding is essentially equivalent to a cut of $850,000 in spending, buying power, correct? So that's saying that 5% of the budget, $850,000 represents 5% of budget, correct?
Right. $17 million budget would be $50,000.
Okay, good. Later in the slide, I think it was on the last one in the presentation, it said we wanted to retain 5% of the budget for, I don't remember exactly what it said, but am I remembering this, this slide correctly? It's essentially, so it's saying that we want to retain $850,000.
That's the retention. We currently, under RSA 198.5, we can retain 2.5% of our net assessment, local assessment. So it's about $250,000. Under the RSA currently that the voters approved indefinitely until voted out is for emergencies and over expenditures. And if not used for that, it's used as the additional revenue source to reduce taxes every year. From what I can tell, in the past few years, it has not been used. It's been used to reduce taxes. The RSA changed two years ago that you can retain up to 5%. And under the new ruling, the 5%, the board has to have a hearing if they use the money. The money doesn't have to be under emergency situations. The 5% can be used for unanticipated expenses. So like Dr. Hart was saying, our budget is going to be a little more lean than it has been. And in case there are some unanticipated expenses that come up, that 5% is up to, it doesn't have to be, the board can decide at near end that if they choose to make, if there's a goal to return $500,000 and there's $700,000. You know what I mean? So it's up to 5%. They'll retain what they choose to retain. But whatever we do use, the difference between the two RSAs is, this one, we want to have a new article this year, well, if the board chooses to, have an article for that new RSA. But you have to have a hearing and it has to be reported in our audit report. Detail what the 5%, what those monies were used. Right now, that 2.5% doesn't have to be reported and we don't have to have a hearing. They can just use it for emergency purchases or over expenditures. If it's, but the 5% has a little more controls to it, I think, and the board would have to have a hearing.
Right, right. But the new rule is that we can retain up to 5% and we just have to have a public hearing.
I think they got rid of the DOE part of that.
Yes, they did, as far as they. Just recently?
Yes.
Well, from sitting through the presentation, I'm not sure if you're, you're intending on showing this presentation to the voters or whatnot, but I saw 5% as 850, 5% retained 5% of the earnings.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's only up to, we're only allowed to keep the local assessment.
Want to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll make sure that it, it says, I think this year's retention is $265,000, I believe is what, what the, what I retained was 265. It's only up to the local assessment, what we, what is collected from the town.
No, I, I got that as soon as he said it's a different, it's a different top line and you're taking percentage off of that. But I didn't get that from the slide.
Says 5% of local assessment, retention of local assessment.
Make sure, make sure it's clear for the community.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
You say the, there's technology expenditures being planned. I'm just curious what the technology expenditures are. And again, we don't have, you don't have to tell me now, but you may want to be ready with that information. But some of those, you know, hey, we're going to spend money here and, you know, I've remembered the technology one. Others may clue in on some of those. So be ready with those numbers would be my feedback.
So, so just for the process, we have two more meetings scheduled with you. And I'm assuming during those two meetings, you'll have your budget basically planned out a little bit more in detail. And we will be reviewing that. So you will be seeing some of that information there. Is that, is that the right assumption?
Yeah, just like last year, the first time the board's hearing, we did this as well. So that was the same as it was last year. So then it, I think Bill, Dr. Hart's plan is to follow his same roadmap he did last year, which I thought worked well. So yeah, so everything that you're hearing tonight is the first time the board is here as well.
I'm new, so.
The, the S R funds, can you explain it? How much were or are or will be the S R funds? And it can be used on facilities, technology and teaching and learning. So can someone explain a little bit more about the S R funds?
Okay. Could someone repeat that question?
Dr. Hart, the budget committee is looking for a little deeper of an explanation on the S R funds, what, what type of things we can use it on for facilities, for technology, for teaching and learning. Kind of laying out a little bit more detail is what the S R funds can be used for.
And what are they and how much?
And how much they are? What do we have or what do we predict to have?
So what they can be used for is, I mean, in a broad definition is anything that's related to COVID. So in, in our facilities, we can do some things like we're, we can look at some of our roofs, but Patty can do a better job of this than I can. But, but there has to be air exchange type of units that are on the roofing for them to consider that, you know, a COVID-related piece. So there's, you know, there's, there's other pieces, you know, I, I think Patty, and correct me if I'm wrong, if, if, you know, say, say carpeting or, or we have, you know, air exchange units in elementary schools. And so anything that would help mitigate the problem of an airborne disease could be, could be used. You can also have a bigger construction project. There's a, there's a far more complicated process for that, but, but that also can happen. The technology, what we're looking at with technology is, is as an example. And, and we don't know, we're, we're looking into this, but we think that this is going to be able to work. So we have a lease for permitium boards that we purchased and installed last year. And we had a multi-year lease. We believe that we'll be able to pay off that lease using these S R funds. We also have software that is, can be multi-year agreements with software. We, we have Chromebooks and, and laptops that, that we can pay off and pay for a multi-year process. So, so if we get that passed, which you, you know, we're fairly certain that that will be able to be passed, that's, that's a fair amount of money that, that you can not, you, you don't have to budget for, for the next several years. Was that helpful?
It is, but how much?
It's three billion and change, yeah. I'm trying to find the exact number from the last meeting. Yeah. I'm trying to find the minutes, but the minutes are off. I want to access you from the last meeting. Those were three, three and change.
Because we came to a little pieces, so we, we approved up to the new total with the second value that came in late Friday that, that week, I think.
So how much again?
They're looking to try to get the exact amount.
So.
It's over three billion, all received in one year or all three years?
It's, it's a total amount we have to extend it by September of 2024.
So I had, I had a question. I think you've answered it, but I just want to clarify. So Dr. Hart, you mentioned facilities and technology. And then the third point you mentioned was teaching and learning. So what I, what I took from all that was it's, it's purchase of a physical asset or let's call it a software asset perhaps. So the teaching and learning is, it's not for salaries or for additional positions or anything like that. It's something, it's a one-time purchase. Is that, is that a fair comment?
Well, i- it's a, it's a combination of, of things. So what we're trying to avoid doing is putting in positions that we, we can't sustain over time. So, so we, we, we don't have that in the, the budget you're going to be looking at. We are looking at what's called a teacher residency program, which, you know, a lot of our expense comes through special education. And we're, we're trying to partner and it looks like we're going to be able to partner with Plymouth State in a teacher residency program, which gets teachers that are going through their master's program to come and have an intensive time with, with us. So what that would mean is they would basically be in the buildings four days out of the week and helping with, you know, students that have academic challenges. So, so that's a fairly significant part of that teaching and learning piece. Now there's, there's, there's other pieces of that, which will allow us to rethink how we use other stuff. So I think just like operations and like technology, we're trying to build the system to, to use these funds to leverage ongoing and embedded budget savings over time.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the parameters. That's all. So I appreciate the answer.
It's 3.4.
3.4?
Yeah.
And have we received any of that yet?
Received all of it, I think, yeah.
And should we spend any of it?
I don't know on that question. I know that when we voted to accept the final balance at the last meeting, we also asked the policy committee of the board to evaluate existing policies to make sure that there was a clear governance protocol in place that we could evaluate expenditures from those funds. So that it was something that the board had a, had a voice in, the public had exposure to as to how that money was spent. It is pretty tightly defined. I don't know, hey, there was a sheet from a couple of weeks ago that you had given us that outlines for producing, building some S R funding. Maybe we can make that available to the budget committee in the next session. It's helpful. It is, it's kind of very wonky as things from the federal government tend to be. There's.
What is it? 24-page policy of our guidelines that we have to follow? All the procurement requirements and everything for federal funding. But the S R funding, I will, at a minimum, 20% of the funding has to be used for loss and learning. So the student, the residency program will definitely go towards that 20% to help in the loss, loss of learning, loss of, yeah, dues of COVID. So 20% of that has to be used for that.
Right, like making up for loss or. Okay, so you've got the 3.4 million in a bank account.
No, no. No, federal government doesn't do that. You need to spend it first.
Okay, so you have.
It's reimbursement. We're approved for it.
Loss of learning.
I have to determine.
So case in point, they had.
So, case in point, they had a robotics team on the high school for one year. But then last year they did have robotics because that whole project, that whole program got shut down. Would revitalizing robotics team because that was a loss of learning count towards that?
Dr. Hart?
That's a question about the robotics team. I, the, the bottom line is actually there's been funding for the robotics team and, and we'll be launching it again this year. I, I didn't hear the specific question, but.
Last year they didn't have it because of COVID. So would that be a loss of learning situation that could count towards the 20% and beef that up? That's all.
I mean, yeah, uh, so yeah, the, the, the 20%, yeah, a whole variety of different things that, that could be connected to, you know, loss of, loss of effective learning. You know, that, that wouldn't happen with this particular year because there's external funding that's going to help with the robotics program. But, um, yeah, for, for, a- a- as an example, you know, an expansion of our summer school was, was another piece that was connected to the 20%. And remember, the 20% is a minimum, that's what they demand. It, so I, I think it's important for people to understand that too.
I'd like to go back to my question. What do you define as loss of learning?
Bill, what is, what is the definition of loss of learning?
How do you define it?
Well, so you'd have, I mean, we, we do ongoing embedded assessments. So if students have lost a percentage of a year of learning, it's reflected in some of the assess, assessments we do. There's also the assessment of, of just, you know, teachers looking at the classroom that's in front of them and the context of, you know, the last several years and seeing if students are coming into this particular school year and, and without the skill sets and the knowledge base that, that students had prior to that. So those are some of the pieces that we'd use to kind of assess where students are and what they may have lost because of COVID.
Can I follow up on that, Bill? With the assessment, the assessments and the timeline of the assessments. Student testing has changed over the years. And in order for you to know where the loss of learning is and, and how, you know, dramatic it is, what assessment and when are those assessments given so you can get on track right away in helping these students?
Yeah. Diane. Craig, could you help me out with Diane's question, please?
Sure, so if I'm off target, let me know. Basically, you know, what are we doing now to identify those loss of learning through our assessments? Assessments have changed over the years. So I guess the question is, what are we doing now for assessment to basically identify those? And then addressing them now rather than waiting three years to address something that maybe we're able to identify now, but we failed to take action on?
Pretty much. I, I know with some of the results of the assessments before, it would take quite a long time before we'd get those results back. They have software that they're instantly testing them, like right now in the classroom. Like, some of the software they have, they're testing them regularly. Like, they just don't even realize they're, like, being tested.
And then is that consolidated? Is someone looking at that?
Yes, their teams are. The teams are, yes. Sorry, I was trying to catch on, sorry, Frank, I didn't.
That's all right.
Sorry, I need to interrupt you.
No, please.
Yes, the teams get together regularly and they're assessing their grade level, their curriculum.
And then to have the ESSR funds come into play. And you're saying that you're looking at policies, so somewhere the Board is involved in the decision of those ESSR funds to help with the learning. So that information would then be addressed to either the principal and then to the school board.
Because the Board has policies that govern expenditures over a certain amount, right? So we, our, yes, the Policy Committee has to put their view, but that that would still hold true for anything expended through the ESSR program. It's just important, I think, when all of a sudden because of this COVID large ESSR, the federal government finds ourselves with the opportunity to spend this money. I think there needs to be proper oversight, right? And that the Board, that the town need to have transparent exposure to these things that we spend dollars on.
I, I agree, I was just trying to see how the funnel went.
Yeah, I think it needs to be defunct. That was a topic of conversation just at the last board meeting. So I think that was a big area of concern, something that I, that I'm interested in.
Right.
And it is very wonky. Like, I mean, we were looking at the fire alarm, Lakeway situation and the way the ESSR, I guess the statutory stuff that establishes the ESSR funds is written. You can use ESSR funds to bring unused space up to code because that will help spread out the kids and could conceivably reduce transmission of communicable diseases in a future pandemic. But since the, the classrooms are currently in use and not condemned, the money can't be used to upgrade the system because it's not expanding our space footprint. So it gets very particular. And I think everything needs to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis is, is part of the challenge.
So without being too cynical, who, who would make a judgment when it's a, a question?
Is every expenditure have to, is it essentially grant-based that have to be? Or is it checked after the fact, how does that look?
What, what do you mean, like?
Means do we spend $200,000 thinking it would be covered by ESSR funds and it turns out it's not?
Well, yeah. Well, first of all, it goes, the whole, has to go through grant approval process.
So it's approved before it's spent?
Absolutely.
And then you get the money?
The activity has to be created and approved by DOE before anything can happen.
With the ESSR funds?
With ESSR funds.
So it's, it's a, it's, it's the Department of Education Committee somehow that's.
Yeah, they approve and.
Adjudicating.
Yeah, yeah. And believe me, it's not easy. I mean, it's not easy. Like, you can't just simply write a couple of sentences and think your activity is going to get.
So, so just, I'm a facilities guy. I've worked at the hospital, putting in grants to the facility department. ESSR funding with Littleton is big. For, it's a big opportunity for the schools to not only improve their infrastructure, i.e. air handling systems, software that is required to run the air handling system. And, and all to prevent pathogens, infection pathogens from getting spread. Over, over time, over the years, this has been neglected. And not purposely, don't get me wrong on that, but it's, it's been neglected. I don't mean Littleton, but nationwide, now you see what's happening.
Whenever you say not addressed, not identified.
It has been not identified, not addressed. We have an opportunity now, and it's, it's more than three million now. I, from what I've read, I don't want to correct anybody here, but I think it's well over about five million that will eventually be able to get. So, so what the facilities group has done is to kind of put together, I know, address Lakeway, the high school, and to see how we can improve on those infrastructures. If we have, we have a list and it's, it's not even near, near the three million. And so, you know, and I, I get disturbed when I kind of hear how people are going to beat this thing to death. To decide whether you're going to spend the money on something that is required that isn't going to affect the tax base in Littleton whatsoever. And, and we're only going to benefit by it in the future because we have currently 18-year-old air handling system here at the high school that hasn't been addressed. So what's going to happen in another two or three years? This guy's going to come over to us, or to these guys, and they're going to say, we need to replace the air handler. And everybody here is going to say, why the heck didn't we do it when we had five million bucks to do it on the government stuff?
So I, I totally agree with you. But, but the other night, listening to some of the comments, it, it was difficult. I think hands down, anyone would say yes in this facility. No one would ever question.
I agree.
No one would ever question that.
You, you have Lakeway, all I hear, I hear, let's not spend another dime at Lakeway. But you have, you have some infrastructure inadequacies there in the individual classrooms through an air quality study that was just done by, by these guys that says you need to do better on your air extinguisher. So, so that's the kind of stuff that this ESSR money is going to allow us to do is to, is to make it safer for the people that are in that school. I mean, whether we leave, leave there or not, it's, it's a small, small price to pay for the safety of everybody in there.
Well, I, I think you hit it on the nail though. You know, these are funds outside of tax base. And, I mean, that really needs promoted. What you just said, so last year, I'm, I'm going to get on a bandwagon here for two seconds. Last year, we had brought forward the idea of having, you know, getting like a project manager to kind of go through all of the information because there's turnover and there's, how many years have we studied this? And to bring all that information together. And we, I was always thinking of George Broder as how he helped us. And what you just said was really in the same vein as George. You're able to communicate it to us in a way that people understand. And so, kudos, I hope you continue to do that.
Well, I have to tell you, I, I left the hospital, managed that for years. The, the facilities, as far as the operation piece. I see an opportunity here to help these folks. These folks volunteer their time. What I would like to provide is sustainability to, to a fellow like this, Dale, because in three years' time, this person here may not be here. Those folks may not be here. I want to be here to, to continue to help with the, with the, with the process.
That was the point of last year. And, and although the Warren article failed, I think they, you also were appointed to the, the building committee.
Yes.
And, and I'll make a building. Facilities committee. And so that, that is the thing that I was trying to, to get. So, but you explained our talking points that everyone of these people should be able to have. It bears nothing on the tax base. It is, there are things that we need to do right now. It's an 18-year-old, you know, 18-year-old facility. 18 already, I can't believe it. But anyways, that these air exchange handlers are 18 years old. And we need to do something. Those are the talking points that everyone needs to have.
I don't, and I, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that because, because like the other night, the fire alarm system at Lakeway, okay? We did, we did a lousy job of not doing our homework there, I, I have to admit. Because of the fact that there may be, there may be a way to improve the existing fire alarm system to at least get us through till, till we decide what the heck we're doing with Lakeway, okay? But to have, just to have that kind of animosity that was delivered on, while I did X, Y, and Z to a certain fire alarm system and it's fine. It, it, it's not apples for apples, and I get hyper when I talk about it.
And just for everybody's benefit too, Henry's referencing, she gets her board. We, public, and they get a board meeting at the beginning of October that in total chronicles about 1.4 million in recommendations for enhancements, replacements, adjustments at Lakeway and here. And I think there's already been the beginnings of assessment of what of those proposed expenditures could be covered through ESSR funds? Because a lot of the air handle stuff, the air quality stuff is very clearly in line with the spirit of ESSR.
It's probably the culprit on the fire alarm system at Lakeway. I came out of the Navy Marine business. Some of the ships that I dealt with carried 35,000 tons of high explosive. It was 35, 40 years old. We repaired the fire alarm system routinely. And we met all of the requirements we had for safety. That was the point of my question. Have we looked at this thing? And somebody who is competent, that when, an unbiased manner, can look at it and come back and report the situation. This thing can be supported for another five years? It can be supported for another six months, or we can't support it?
I don't disagree with you. And, and when we, we had our session two weeks ago, we were not prepared to answer the question. And, and, and I, and I, and I still can't answer the question, but Dale and I had a discussion today about it. And we are going to look into it so that we can respond more intelligently to, to the folks who asked the question in the future. Because we need to. We need, my feeling is we need to restore faith in whenever we talk to the people in the community and say, we, we need, we need to spend this because we need to. It's not because we feel it. And that's, that's my goal.
I think the other thing that was unclear from the, the meeting that we had a week or two ago, how long ago it was now, was that what we were asking the community was whether or not the community wanted us to set this item of money into our funds, our, our capital funds to spend on items such as A, B, C, and D, which we were then presented. And I think, I think, I personally think that what we failed to do was kind of clarify that we weren't trying to bring all these individual items, that these were the definitive things, these were the definitive prices, and this is what we were going to do with it. These were safety items that we were, that were brought to us as recommendations that we felt needed to be addressed. We had money to spend it on. And what we were asking the town, of town, was whether or not we had permission to put that into a fund and then explore and get bids, get, you know, true numbers. And the only thing we really had to go on was the getting figure of $150,000. And we could have taken longer and come with much more detail on that, but it would have put off the tax bill. We were trying to be cognizant of that, that typically we get our tax bills in November. And we delayed it, the more we delayed it, the more we delayed getting the tax bill out to the community. So I think that truthfully, I think we failed to kind of make that more clear than we did. So I think people that were in that room that voted, were voting on approving those five items that we listed, not on putting the funds aside for us to use on safety items. And here are some possible items we may spend them on.
Yeah, hindsight, I wouldn't have brought up the five items at all. It's that we have this extra money, we'd like to put it aside for a safety capital reserve fund. Do you approve or not?
So in hindsight, somebody in that meeting would have stood up and said, well, what are you going to spend it on? It would have happened.
Actually, that old lady blasted torpedoed everybody with the Daisy Bronson, former Daisy Bronson. It, it, and that just.
Well, and I don't want to rehash last Monday, of course, I think we succeeded not failing because I was on the other side of the equation. But I, to talk to what Henry's saying a little bit, just to give us a different perspective. And it's Greg said, this is the first time we're hearing any of this. And for me, this is the first, first time because this is my first budget process as a board member. My concern as a, as a taxpayer and as a board member is that I, I don't want the windfall that we're getting from the Fed to mask the fact that we already have a real big, right? So yes, do I think we should spend the money and spend it up? Yeah, of course we should, the federal government's given us money, we should spend it, right? As much as that drives my gears as a taxpayer. But I don't want that to cover over sins and to, for us to not be credentialed going forward. and to, for us to not be credentialed going forward. Because the reality is, we shouldn't constantly be in a position where we have all of this stuff unaccounted for with a seventeen million dollar budget. I think the reality is the district gets plenty of money. The district has really, really large administrative overhead costs. That needs to be rationalized. The district has really, really high healthcare. That needs to be rationalized. And so I do think we should spend the money. But I think as we work through these next several budget cycles, I'll be a part of three of them so long as I'm alive. Perhaps my wife would prefer that I not be. But I do think we have to say, okay, let's take this opportunity, spend this money. But how do we look at the budget through the lens of what's the post-COVID impact of the current spending levels? Less ESSER funds, and how do we make sure we're not in this situation on a go-forward basis? For this stuff can be paid for, because we do have enough money allocated. Because I think the reality is from the town's perspective, right or wrong, now, I'll find out as I go through this process. The district has plenty of money. It isn't necessarily the most efficient at spending it. That's why we're doing another operational audit that was voted on at the, at the, at the last town meeting. That's underway. That's why we're doing a, a use of facility study that's just been concluded that we're waiting to get a report on. So I think there's opportunity for us to, yes, spend this money, do the PR campaign that Henry's saying, make it clear that like, yeah, of course we should spend this money, because it's not going to impact anybody. But it will impact the taxpayers if we keep not accounting for the other issues that we have, because we'll always be in a position to need to add warrant articles on top of the budget that is already a pretty healthy budget. So just a different perspective from.
Now, is there, is there one more item that's potentially confusing voters? That is the desire to have out there in the public realm, the idea of three or four school sites for replacing Daisy Bronson. Yeah, some people could be, oh, Lakeway, sorry. Boy, I can't believe I did that. But anyway, some people may be saying, "Why should we spend anything on Lakeway if we're going to be building new schools?" So I think that also needs to be taken head-on, especially by the school board if we're going to.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to. We're having a bit of failure start. Henry's actually on that committee. Here's Lakeway committee. Uh, myself and Erica, Dale, Crystal, Henry, Dale. And right now, we're, we're trying to get town members to be involved. And everybody has told us no.
I, to be honest, I actually felt bad that she lost that vote. And I wasn't here, so I, you know, I, I'm part of the problem, I guess.
But essentially, the scope of the committee's work, as it hopefully takes flight, is to not just evaluate new construction, right, but to evaluate new construction, renovation, and consolidation, which is why the use of space study is so important for us to look at. And I think that work and that evaluation, especially use of space, informs these discussions. Because that was my immediate reaction when I asked the representative from yet, was, okay, you have a 1.4 million dollar proposed budget. One billion of that went for us at Lakeway. Does that make the most sense? Obviously, we're not going to have a big school built in August, right? Probably in August of twenty-two or twenty-three, right? But what makes sense? And I think those are the discussions that we need to have.
Yeah, I think there's a need for clarity.
Yeah.
So just, just, uh, I'm gonna play the time check guy. Uh, we're an hour and forty minutes into this meeting. What, what's really important, I think, is that, that we leave with a, you know, a list of concrete feedback. I don't know if, if Sheena can kind of review what she's captured so far. But if we could do that and then, and then add, make sure that we have everything that, that's important to the school board and to budget committee. And, you know, we're not going to solve all the issues tonight, but it, but if we at least have them identified so we can reflect on it, we can modify the budget and, 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 and hopefully be better in line with what the two boards' objectives are for when we do our first formal presentation. So, so I guess I'd turn it over to, to Sheena if she could kind of identify what you have so far. And if we could just have, if there's somebody, I don't know if it would be Greg, you, if you could kind of try to add or summarize or pieces that have been, you know, discussed today to make sure that we have that and we can act on it. We want some actionable feedback tonight.
Sure. So the first thing on the list is negotiations, which, you know, are ongoing right now. And, and I think one of the things that was carved out from the negotiations is that next line, which is the cost of education study. And what was evident in that study is with regards to the cost of benefits versus the salaries or the, or the pay rate. And whether or not there's an opportunity to make some changes now while we're in negotiations, which I'm not sure if it's too late to do that now, or if this is something we at least need to keep in front of us going forward. But is there an opportunity to save money for the district through benefits? Improving benefits, making benefits more efficient. But again, I think those two things were tied together, knowing that we're in the middle of negotiations and not sure if that will have much impact now, or if it's going to have to be something that is at the forefront of the next round. But that, I'm not sure. I don't know. You know, I'm trying to remember when we did our last change of health insurance, which was several years ago, how that was done with the negotiation piece. I don't know if you remember.
Yeah, I, I think if I remember from past negotiations, we have so many times that you meet and you have to declare, there is a definitive date, but after that date, you can't bring any new items on. So I don't know if we passed that date or not.
But we're not, we're not past that line.
Okay, so.
So there is an opportunity.
There is an opportunity.
And so I think that also is the, the third line, which is look at salaries and just benefits. That's all kind of one piece. The next item on the list was the discussion around potentially for a warrant article for furniture. And what they, what the budget committee came back with is whether or not we should be adding furniture into our regular operating budget, doing some type of, of cycle. What our current budget amount is, what our age of our furniture is throughout the district, and how do we get that onto a cycle to keep it in the operating budget rather than doing a warrant article? The other one that's on the list is technology expenditures, kind of defining those technology expenditures. And again, some of that would tie into ESSER versus non-ESSER. And then I'm just going to go through my notes because I've got a little bit different there. So furniture, one of the things was to be clear that we clarified the five percent versus five percent just to the community. That was a good recommendation. And that was the five percent inflation impact versus the five percent of unexpended funds. ESSER funding, again, kind of, I think we had a good discussion about how that doesn't impact the taxpayer, but how we still want to make sure that there is oversight and that we're spending it appropriately and that that is transparent to not only the board, but in turn to our community as well. Even though it doesn't have a tax impact, the transparency of that spending is still something that's needed. And I think that all stems to that trust topic. And then I think the other last thing was really to clarify what our plans are for Lakeway, whether in both short term and long term. There's, there are things that we have to do because we're in the building. There's things that we can't just ignore because our hope is to be out in ten years or in five years. Because I know they started looking at this back in the seventies because my father-in-law kept in his briefcase a study of the property, the Greenwood property? The Greenwood property that was done back in the mid-seventies. So this hasn't, this isn't a new project. But if we stopped fixing Lakeway in the seventies because we were planning to be in the Greenwood property or somewhere else in town, where would we be today? So there's an ongoing need to spend money on that building in order to keep it safe for our, our children to be in that building for education. At the same time, we have to be cognizant of not overspending on things that are going to prevent us from eventually making some type of change, whether it's a new building, as, as Matt said, a re, you know, restructuring of that building or restructuring of the district and bringing into a different facility altogether. So I don't know, did I touch all the points that we kind of talked about, or did I miss any?
No, I think you touched it. Just on the facilities, on the facilities. One of the things that we had to do in a fire facility renovation was really explain to the public how education had changed from the time that that building had been built. And some of the things that came up was, um, girls are now playing sports. I mean, we, we, back then, they didn't as much, but now we just expect it, right? So you need the facility for the, the female, the girl teams as well.
That was completely different forty years ago than it was today.
Yeah, exactly. The other thing is technology, you know? Technology changed everything. And how many blocks you need in the, outlets you need in the classroom. You know, it's all of those things that people just don't really think about, but you have to kind of list them for them.
So, so I want to, I'm going to throw a question back at you, because this is something that we've struggled with on the board for years. How do we get this to the public? We, we've tried to hold public sessions at Lakeway to get them to come into the fiscal building. We've held sessions here. We've done, you know, we've done write-ups. People have written, you know, editorials. And you've been to many of the meetings. It's the same people that come every time. Just as you look at our voting, if you look at our vote every year, what percentage of our, of our residents actually vote is small? So how do you, how do we get, I'm looking for this group, for you to give us suggestions of how we can get it out there to more people? Because it seems like we're, we're getting it out to people, but it's the same people. And we're not getting it out to the people that we need to, it seems, because we're, we're continuing to fail. And I know some of that is the messaging and some of that is how it's presented. But how, I'm looking for, I think all of us might be looking for other ideas as to how to get this out to our community.
Social media. I like, I, I, I check Facebook.
Yeah.
I don't go to the SAU site, even when my ad for kids in the system. I didn't go to the website for the school. But I check, I check social media, so.
And I think, I think we've done some, I don't know how well we've done it, but I mean, I think there has been some attempt to do that as well.
So you think, did you see all of our recent postings then? So you saw all of our recent postings?
No, no one was sharing with, sharing the posts. And I'm not, you know, I didn't, I'm not connected to the school board or whatever the school board is. Facebook or the SAU's Facebook or anything like that. So you have that to get over in the first place. But then if there's information that, that people seem, deem worth sharing, you have to make it pretty inflammatory, I guess, so people share it one way or the other. It gets people talking. Seriously, I mean, you can't just go, "Well, this is what we're thinking." It's like, "We're going to spend this money," or "We're not going to do this." And then people start getting angry one way or the other and share, "Do you believe this? Nah, 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 nah." And next thing you know, there's a lot of people that are just going about it. I'm not sure inflaming things would be the right approach, however. I, I think, I think finding other ways to inform, I think Facebook may be one. And so I hate Facebook and I won't use it. So there's other people like me. So I think there's multiple, multiple pathways. But I also think that you, you, the school system and you as leaders and the school board and Dr. Har, I think you actually need to select directions and go after them a little bit. But you've got to be able to explain why this is the direction we're going. And then I would, I would help you get public participation in those things somehow. And, and maybe it's a combination of which you say, but other things as well.
Because, for instance, here's an example. Last year, if you were at our deliberative session, a community member got up and said this. They turned, they talked down that, that position for a, I can't remember what we called it, the project manager. And they said, "No, we, we don't need that. There's so many experts in our community that would be willing to volunteer their time." Matt and Erica reached out to community members and.
And Henry and Dale.
And him, and, and the answer back is, "No, we don't have time," or "No, we're not interested." So.
That, that's disappointing.
It's highly disappointing.
I think we actually.
We all pushed for that.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. You were very supportive of that position. But to have somebody come up and say, "Oh, you don't need this. There's countless people in the community to help out." So it fails. Then we go to do exactly what they tell us to do, which was call on our community members, and the doors are shut in our favor.
I hate to say this, but somebody with a good marketing background might be, might be important to tap into here. It's not me. I'm not a marketer.
Normal.
I think Henry's the marketer here. Seriously, I think, I think we did everything that you did. Or you're, you are doing everything we did. I, I, I remember like writing guest editorials. I have four guest editorials. And I, I reserved a spot in the paper. I called them up two months in advance and said, "I want these four dates because we're going to have a, a guest editorial." I remember working on them until midnight and sending them out to Kim DeLuise so she could fine-tune it. And so you're doing that to, but you, but what is missing is like, I have to say, last year's warrant article, going to John, John's point, was a little bit too, we'll do it this way or we'll do it that way. And it was, people just kind of turned it down because they didn't know which way you were going to go. So you have to find a direction. You've got to have what you're doing, the guest editorials, the committees, all of that. I remember taking plans from one site to another site, from a bank, from one bank down to Shaw's, down to the library, down everywhere. So people, once you've got a plan, architectural renderings, that people could see it. They couldn't help but not see it because it was everywhere. And then we had, we had George. And George just had a way of, we knew he knew what he was talking about. And so when he spoke, and he spoke most of the time, he did a lot of the presentation, people trusted the information. And it wasn't like we asked you a question and you said, "We'll get back to you." Because you have a captive audience. You need to have that answer then, not later. And that's where your spokesperson comes in. And then all of you have to have cheat sheets with all of this information down there. So like, when you see someone in the grocery store and they ask you a question, you know it. You've nailed it. I remember having cheat sheets. So, but you're, you know, it's workable. You just have to decide what you want.
Hey, folks. Great conversation. And I appreciate the, the summary that, that Greg did. I don't know if we're close to wrapping up, but I haven't been well, so I'm going to need to excuse myself if we're, if we're not close to being done. But I appreciate everybody's feedback. I think we captured kind of the, the essence of, of the feedback, especially from the, the budget committee. So again, the, 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 the current discussion is critically important, but I'm, I'm going to have to excuse myself, I think.
Thank you, Bill. Good luck in your recovery.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.